Can you hear us? Thank you, we got it. Okay, so it is. So one, I'd like to call the East Line, the June fifth, East Line Board of Ed regular meeting to order. For those of you stand on the separate plate of linens.
The United States of America. Foundation.
First order of business is public comments. Any public comment? Any public comments? I just saw a little battery, does that matter? Hearing no public comment, we propose a public comment. We'd like to make a minor adjustment to the agenda. If someone could make a motion to move a special reports up before executive sessions. Second. Laura got it, okay. Further comment? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Abstain. Okay, so we now are gonna go to special reports. And there's no selectmen representative today, so we have. Minat is here to, for her last. Session, so we appreciate, maybe before you get started, tell us a little bit about what you're doing next.
Yeah, so I'm going to UConn's, with your program, so. I'll be spending four years at UConn and then four years at UConn School of Medicine to become a doctor.
Are you following in your brother's footsteps, same program that it, that's great, that's, that's really cool, congratulations. So do you wanna?
Hey, I actually have a relatively long course. So, senior college this weekend, June fifth. It was at the Mystic area in Groton, we had three hundred and twenty-four kids attending. And it was an overall very successful event. Final exams are gonna start this Tuesday, June eighth. The Eastline Drama Club received a lot of award nominations, where the yellow awards was in Hartford. Girls' golf were the ECC tournament champions. Girls lacrosse are also the ECC tournament champions. The boys track and field team are the ECC tournament champions. And boys baseball are also the ECC champions. We had our seniorship to six flags, May nineteenth. Senior Awards Night was on through the second. Was also on in second. State Open for track and field are today. Last week, we also had this event called Senior Spirit Week. So it was an event essentially organized by all of the senior senate. And it was meant to instill a sense of community within the graduating seniors. So Thursday, we addressed like the color blue, because that was our spirit week color day. Tuesday, we dressed like it was our first day of kindergarten. So that was definitely interesting to see. Wednesday was Celebrity Lookalike Day. Thursday was College Sure or Future Profession Day. So many students were wearing their college merchandise or any future profession that they're getting involved in. And then Friday was Senior Shirt Day, so all the students received free shirts from the Student Senate. And, and artists who had made the shirts and they were all supposed to wear on Friday. And we also organized a senior cat rally, which also had occurred on Friday. There were many games played, such as family feud, where seniors were competing against each other. And also, are you smarter than a fifth grader? Where we had a group of seniors compete against faculty members at Eastline's school. And that was definitely fun to watch. Our, who won the faculty by one point. Our senior dinner dance at the Port and Starkford and New London this Thursday, June eighth, and it's from five to eight P M. And overall, all the seniors are very excited as Sulea comes to an end for our graduation on June fifteenth.
Thank you.
Hey, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Have a. Certificate for you, to thank you for all your time, and we appreciate it. And I'm sure you'll do what I'll and definitely check in with us. But nice to hear how everyone's doing, so.
Thank you so much, enjoy the rest of your day.
Even change the agenda. Thanks, take care. Okay, so. Now. Yeah, now we need a motion to go into executive session now. To discuss. Yeah, to discuss the proposed employment contract for Superintendent Newton. Effective for July first, twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, in.
Is it including Superintendent?
I guess it is, yeah, it is for part, I guess, so including, yeah. So I think. Kate actually made the motion, and then Jill. And, further comment? All those in favor?
And one of you should probably call Candace, or I can leave my phone in here, but might be.
Oh, I'm saying aye, and yes, somebody please call me.
Guess you could just go to the next room, maybe, if you're not alrightly. Alright. Chris, can you?
Oh, you got it back going, thank you, Chris, step ahead of us. So we've just exited executive session where we went into executive session to discuss the proposed employment contract for Superintendent Newton. For the effective year July first, twenty twenty-three to June thirty of twenty twenty-four. So the next order of business is the approval of minutes from the May twenty-second meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as posted.
When Kate got it, maybe. Any further comment?
Yeah, she's, she's getting back on.
Okay.
She just had to get off to get on.
Yeah, any? Any further comment? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Abstain.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving, we have a consent agenda item.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as posted.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Abstain. Motion passes, for those of you at home, it's the approval of a proposed delinquion and the amount of one thousand. And fifty dollars from the town of Eastline Parks and Rec, Eastline High School Girls Lacrosse. And it's, there's programs that. Coach Phil runs through the Parks and Rec and it comes back to the girls cross program, which is very nice on both their parts to. Do that and helps the program. Who is in the state semifinals on Wednesday, for those of you. Who may be interested in going, and I think it's up in. Weather's Field. Okay. Next, we're in our discussion action items with the finance facilities community, we have. Do you wanna do the? We'll get an update on the aquatic program first.
Yeah, so Rob Boucher is over covering at the pool, unfortunately, you get stuck there this evening, otherwise he would be here. But, just to kinda start, even though you can see the financials and a projection through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. He's run two sessions of swim lessons, he has another one prepped for this summer. Which is really the big moneymaker, which is good, they brought in a lot of, a lot of revenue, we've got us back in black. Rather than being a rear in the red for a period of time. So you can see, you know, the net income and, and loss. What I'm talking with Rob about right now is the fact that, and we'll know this, this summer, the bids will go out again for roof. And it will be a longer period of time, so a shutdown would occur at the end of March, so it'd be April first and through August, so that's a five month. Period, it's a long period, long, you need, I think that's why we found nobody bid on it last time, because it was a short duration, they couldn't get it done. So we're gonna see what happens with this. But longer shutdown means less money coming in, sort of thing, so.
Kinda less money going out.
So he's gonna try and hammer the swim lessons, we have a session this summer, he's gonna bring one right up in the beginning of next school year, and then get another, at least one more in. Before we have that, that shutdown, so. Hopefully we can generate enough revenue, to, to hold us, you know, without going back into the, back into the red for a period of time. So we'll, we'll see, but hopefully, you know, with what Mariana is projected, that will grow even higher, because the summer swim lessons are not, you didn't put those on.
I, I put a little bit in there for it, I wasn't sure what his timing was gonna be on that.
Okay.
So, so that could be higher if, you know, registration opens in, in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah. Exactly, yeah, he said waiting list for the last two sessions, so we had a lot of getting waiting, so. Yeah, yeah, so it's been filled, it's been, it's been solid, it's been good, so it's generating out the money that.
For the students?
Yeah, yeah, usually the age three to. Three to seven, roughly, and then there was just they go into the nutmeg program. Expand, yeah, so it's, it's nice feeder program, you know, right up, so, we'll see where it goes, yeah. So.
Go ahead, Elisa.
Just a suggestion, although maybe being done already, is just around the communication, so when you have that. Period of time where. Schedule, so something that people can kind of, you know, you know, know what's happening, but also kind of be able to forward plan and. Super quiet during that period and give them, you know, see if I can give a heads up, but also.
Exactly, yeah, we're gonna have to freeze memberships, or you're right, to get that information, you know, out, both shutdown, startup. Yeah, the, the big push to, to open back up, Rob did utilize all of the principals weekly communications, so. Every week, yeah, so I think that's helped to generate some swim lessons, too, we put out a sale on as well. But you're absolutely right, Elisa, so we'll, we'll make sure that we're developing a plan around that shutdown and start back up. So, yeah, that's.
And how's the membership, not the swim look, but the general membership, we adjusted. I'm trying to remember, at least track, we adjusted the.
We did, we tweaked the fee a little bit, it's basically stayed the same, there hasn't been any real changes, I don't be sure anything else is new, Mariana, but. Last night, he told me, it has not really changed, we've got some outstanding balances. And they've charged him, you gotta get those collected, so there's, there's some dollars out there, they're still not reflected in here, so. We should go to collect a couple more thousand.
Maybe, so, I don't think prior, given we may be shutting down again soon. It's not worth it, but we probably need to do a, a big marketing push or something to get memberships up. And just remind people, I can't remember, someone who lives in town. I was talking to, and they're like, oh, I, I'm going to like Waterford or somewhere. Well, for Eastline?
Is it really, it's Park and Record, who runs it over there.
Anyway, so like, they didn't even know we had a pool, that was, you know, so it's like, let's just make sure.
Is it free for Waterford? But not Eastline?
Yeah, I wanna tie Kevin, the new A D, in with, with Rob as well, they're gonna be sharing that secretary, Terry Moffey was the secretary for Kevin. She's been helping Rob, and, and it's trying to push, you know, communications. Phone calls have been a bit of a problem as well, with, we've got two sites people are calling right now, so we're trying to clean that up. When, but Terry leaves for the summer, but having, you know, of course she's becoming into Terry, so she can then follow them to Rob's, we have a, a straight line of communication versus. You know, we haven't been able to get a full-time person back at the desk, the Aquatic Center, so, you know, it's, it's not Rob, that call is not getting responded to, and that's been an issue. So we need to fix that problem.
Any other questions?
We'll keep you posted on, great, those numbers grow.
Let's move on, Chris, on the food service program. And our strawberry root bar.
Alright. Tell me when, Chris, you're.
Yeah, so we're just back again to give you a little wrap-up of the year, since we're here last. You approved most of these spendings for what we did, the direct revenue that we had in our checking account, so this is a. Smack, just a little bit of them, we threw a lot more that we actually. Did upgrade, but we got five double deck ovens. For all schools. Just with the increased volume of all students eating, we needed to upgrade the stove, so all, all schools got ready to double their covenants. We had to replace seven double door in your refrigerator or freezers. That went out throughout the year, and so we were able to do that. We had to replace four hand sinks, because the health department changed the regulations on them. So that, that was something we paid for out of the lunch program. When the middle school. Hot water tank went down, we actually put in a temporary system to keep us in compliance with the health department. And. We put in temporary warmers for the hand sinks and for the pot sinks, keeping us compliant, so we could stay open. During that time when we were waiting for the hot water tank to be fixed at the middle school. Then we paid for a percentage of the replacement hot water heater for the middle school. The three elementary schools kitchens were way behind the times, so we had, we got them three steamers. For their schools, we got a steam kettle for the high school. So Carlo was cooking two pounds of pasta at a time, now she can cook thirty pounds of pasta. And then we replaced the blocking freezer components for the nine eight center school. Finally moved outside, so it doesn't sound like an airplane is landing in the kitchen, and then replaced all the. Tables for the students at the elementary level, so they have all brand new tables for their cafeteria itself. So that was some of the upgrades, and we have none more, just. That, that was the, the meat of them.
Chris, I'm gonna miss, you said that's about two hundred thousand dollars.
It's around two hundred thousand dollars. We spent in upgrades for the school, it didn't cost Board of Ed any money at all.
Good job.
And, so that's it on that one. The next project is the greenhouse. For old rock planters, the high school shop class is actually building it, they're in their final stages, as you can see from the picture there. Putting up, they started to build a roof the other day, and it should be fully up and operational for the fall, and the planer students come back. The planer students are gonna do all the growing, so they're gonna grow herbs and stuff for the whole district. During school year, and then they're gonna do all the pre-growing for the main garden. And then the A program students during the summer, because they're here, are gonna actually help maintain the garden, they're gonna go out, weed and water. And then we're gonna use all those products when we come back in the fall. And again, this is a program funded by the, by the lunch program, and we'll be using a big collaborative between the. Planer students, and then eventually we're also gonna get a garden going at the other elementary schools, and they'll use the products from the greenhouse to get those gardens started, too. Great, and we're gonna do like a big. Grand opening, and we'll all be invited to, and we'll do ribbon cutting.
And of course, you know, I love composting.
Yes, I know, I know.
Health department has to buy in on it.
Yes, that's, that's the main. And then we were able to purchase a, a service truck for the food service program. Which, with a lift gate, which my back, thanks you very much for. But it's really expanded our farming schools, as you can see, the amount of products we're allowed to pick up at one time. We can go to the local farms, pick up thirty bushels of apples, one shot, deliver them to the schools. And also, we can move USDA. They're supposed to deliver to each school when we have brown box products. But a lot of times they'll bump those orders, so if we deliver to one site, they typically always come. So we, we've been using that strategy, where they deliver it to the middle school, because we have a loading dock there. And then we're able to move it with a service truck or onto the other schools. It's also cut back on the facilities labor. Because before I was having to call them and say, hey, can you drive a truck and drive the stuff around, now all I have to do is back truck up, load it, and bring it to the schools. We started to do some of the fun stuff we were doing before, we, we relaunched the Viking Cafe this spring. We did around March Madness theme, and we had some giveaways for UConn products and. The culinary students actually served as the reservation takers, the hostesses and servers for the restaurant. And as, as I said in the slide, we opened it up for reservations, and first day it sold out in fifteen minutes, both seatings. So we'll definitely be doing it in the fall. And because you can see, you had a real great time with it, so, and there was, up on the cat, the catwalk, but in the fall, we're actually gonna do it out in the courtyard. Incorporated, do like, maybe like barbecue theme, and the shop class that they built some cornhole games. You know, again, try to collaborate as much as you can. We had our opening day baseball theme day, I was able to secure a lot of donations from. Red Sox, Yankees, the Argos, the Sea Unicorns. And we were able to get a bunch of different prizes away, as giveaways on the trays, and all the kids got baseball cards, and had video highlights up on the big screen. Made a whole day of it, because you can tell by the faces. Really enjoyed the day. And then the last thing is the lunch superheroes, the reason we can do all this is my staff. I come up with these crazy ideas, and they're the ones that. Put it out, so they're definitely, the main reason why we can do a lot of this. We started doing catering again for the sports teams and the drama, we supported there when they were setting up their stage, we did their. I guess you'd be a drama team dinners, and we started supporting the football team again, lacrosse. Softball, some of those, some of those teams. And then we started doing our barbecue Wednesdays at the middle school again, when it got nice. We do. We just do a basic barbecue menu every Wednesday, get smoke going through the building. Get the kids excited about lunch. Then just a basic count, we did seventy-three, seventy-three thousand five hundred and sixty-eight breakfasts so far this year. And two hundred twenty-nine thousand eight hundred twenty-five lunches, so three hundred thousand meals were put out this year. By the staff, so. And we did celebrate that one, May fifth, as a lunch year of the.
Invite us each individually in for lunch.
Wednesday barbecue. For the Viking Cafe next year, let's, let's invite to the board to come to the Viking Cafe.
Kid will hate it, so I wanna do it.
So that's pretty much. The wrap-up from this year, next year, we really don't know what's gonna happen yet. We're waiting, they're supposed to be voting on the budget tomorrow. Right now, free lunches is not in the budget. The appropriation committee took it out. That doesn't mean, it might not go back in before they actually vote. But it is two hundred million dollars, so it is a big, big ticket item. And there is some things coming down from a federal level that I've heard about, but we're. Unfortunately, we have to sit and wait, and figure out exactly what they're. As far as the meals, right now, they're telling us we should plan on full price. So that's something we might have to, over the summer, address with you, is, because we haven't, we haven't raised our prices since I've been here. Seven years, and we definitely have to get them up to the proper level. That's, and that'll be a federal mandate, not just. From us, doesn't matter what actually is in our checking account, it's what the federal is gonna set their prices at. So that'll be something we'll have to look at. Going forward.
Sorry, can you just explain, so they're gonna federally mandate?
Well, the, the feds set up a price of what you're supposed to be charging. Per, per meal, before the pandemic happened, we were. At that level where we needed to be. Post-pandemic, as you know, all the prices have gone through the roof, they've allowed us to keep our prices the same. But next year, they said if it goes back full price, they're gonna make us go back to the calculation of the federal level. So they actually give us a formula that we have to fill in our prices, and then it tells us what we need to increase them to.
Well, so as a district, we can't. Charge, I can see where they say you can't charge more than this, but we can't charge less than that.
It's, yeah.
I'm not saying we should, I don't know what we should do, but federally, they're saying, if it's, I'll just say it's five dollars, which you have to pay, if you wanna charge four. And subsidize it through.
Well, they do allow you to do that, if you wanna subsidize.
Oh, okay.
But if you don't wanna subsidize it, they give you a formula. And, and us, in the formula, the thing that we have going great for us is that we are a multi-school system. As far as high school, middle, so we can actually spend, spread those prices over the district. So obviously, the high school kids in charge, we charge a little more, middle, like how we have it now, so you wouldn't have like a two dollar jump in the elementary cost. It would be a smaller increase per level. To get to that level, but like I said, they haven't made us increase it since the pandemic, but. With the inflationary cost, they're going to make everybody. Get to that level. At some point.
I'm just curious, what comes from the USDA, what, what are they, what are they shipping to you?
They're mostly commodity products, so. Beef, chicken, dairy. And we're also part of the D O D fresh fruit program. It's all free. The program itself, the only thing we pay. The only thing we actually pay for is the, was, is the brown box, boxed up, that say our. Amber, or chicken, and those type of things, we pay a delivery fee, and it's around three dollars and fifty cents a case.
So what's the fruit thing, what's your fruit connection?
The D O D is the Department of Defense, actually controls the produce. Component, I know, it's crazy, and I actually have to go on the same site that you can buy machine guns and bombs on. Clearance to get it.
Are you kidding?
So the D O D controls that, so you go on and you order fresh produce from them, and then they have local providers.
Are they taking out of like? The bomb shelters and?
For some reason, they.
Is it like a national stockpile that they're pulling?
They just control the money.
Like, it would be like USDA or something that would.
Their boat is local providers.
But for some reason, they control the, the money part of it. And we go on and they give us a spreadsheet that we can order off of, and then. It's a local provider from, I think it's Rhode Island right now who has it, and then they provide us with. The products, and they get delivered once a week in the schools, it's a set dollar amount that we get for a year. This year, we got, I believe, thirty-five thousand dollars worth of product. And it, and it's actually a great product, like, you know, we have. The other day, I got blueberries, strawberries, watermelon, you know, the kids love that kind of stuff, so. It's, it's great, so that's primarily what we get.
Other questions?
Chris, do you anticipate having to do any, in near future, any major kitchen upgrades again, or is that this elaborate every day?
We're pretty, we're pretty close to having everything close to new. I would like to redo the floor in the middle school kitchen, just because. When they originally did it, they did like an epoxy floor, they didn't do a tile floor, so it really. Needs to be upgraded, but a lot of that'll depend on our final numbers at the end of this year. And we wanna stay as close to that allowable amount of money that we can keep, just. In case we do go back full price, because.
We'll have a buffer.
Yeah, we'll have that buffer for, for the inflationary increase.
Oh, can you tell me a little bit about the dietitian?
I was gonna say, for that, my weekly update, yeah, yeah.
Um, yeah, so uh. The, the dietitian position that we wanted to add is. For support for. The lunch program, but also for the community of the school. Um, so it'd be more of uh. They would have like office hours for the high school student, like athletes and students who wanted to talk about. You know. How to eat healthy and how to, you know. Develop a plan for their eating. Um, but also. Also supporting the program for all the state audits and preparing the nutritional information for the state.
The menus.
Would tell my daughter that Cheetos and Coke is not a good breakfast. Or lunch or dinner that.
There and they also be, be taking a big head on the uh, the wellness committee. Of running that program and getting it to the students. Um, this, this year we did our first. Focus group with the students. It went great. Uh, they actually came in, we did some food sampling. And they talked from everybody from PE teachers to principals to admin and they were telling what they wanted from the wellness. So uh.
Yeah, so we had some um. Three or four major outcomes. Actually, many of the outcomes that came from the focus group were around nutrition education. So the kids came up with ideas to. Better offer programming for next year. Um, so I just actually sent them. A follow-up letter on some of our focus areas that will work with the new R and D person when she starts to help kind of. Launch that work and uh. Bring some of that programming forward. And then there's some pieces on the curricular side that I will do with uh. With the classroom teachers in terms of writing some nutrition curriculum units to be included. Um, aside from your typical. You know, food plate lessons, like kids really wanna know more. Who talked about food chemistry, knowing the chemistry behind the food.
Oh, I like that.
Um, one of the students shared that they really wanna learn about food. Like you traditionally learn about drugs and alcohol in terms of how does, how does bad food impact you, you know? So it was, it was really powerful. We had. It was work that was.
It could, we could, it could have been four hours.
Yeah.
That they just, they didn't wanna leave.
Right.
And then it was, and it was, it was elementary all the way to high school.
Right.
Yeah, that's great. Cause one of the things I've been thinking about, you know, we talk about financial literacy and trying to. Implement some type of program here. There's this nutritional literacy as well. There's so much information out that. Because there's like misinformation, maybe a little disinformation. It's also like. We also don't know scientifically and ever like how food actually interacts with our body or different foods and it interacts with. Different people differently. Um, and there's all types of diets and thoughts we're talking a little bit about, but um. And it's hard to decipher all that information. I mean, as far as an adult to decipher it all, I can't imagine as a. You know, as a student, eight through twelve, trying to figure out. Should I be, you know, is this bad, you know, is Coke and Cheetos bad? I, I don't know. Well, probably, but uh, but. You know, there's a lot of, you know. You know, people say, don't eat any carbs. Well, is that really the right answer? Well, I think, I think if you're gonna. Being sport, whatever. Like there's, there's time to like kind of, kind of navigate through that. So the more you can do with that, I think. There's, there's an element, there's financial literacy, there's nutritional literacy.
We want this position to cover all this, you know, start with the elementary kids, do the middle. You know, where would the high school get? So it's broad spectrum.
Well, I just wanna say the, the connection to curriculum is really important. University equity and inclusion because different people like to, you know. When my husband and I first got married. I'm from an Irish background and. He was like, do we have ten potatoes with every meal? And I said, be a meal if it, if we didn't have.
Good opportunity to explore.
Exactly.
That's like I tell my, my nine-year-old, you need protein. He only eats for its vegetables.
Yeah.
I'm like, you need protein. You need and you don't do it. But if someone in uh, who's teaching you tells you, maybe you'll do it. I'll include the link to the letter that was sent back out to the focus group that it um, you know, just provides an overview.
Maybe we'll see in the summer.
Yeah, we wanna come.
We'll get the, we'll get the ribbon cutting too.
Yeah, yeah, we'll get all that. So that, um, we'll get that spread away for early fall.
So, oh, two ribbon cuttings. We'll do the baseball field next year too.
Yes.
Baseball work, kind of work out this offseason.
Or so than we thought, which is good. So we've got a couple of games on there. So.
Okay. Okay, so moving on, um, discussion, action, instructional, Board of Ed, um. Two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four goal planning. So just a reminder, we have our goal workshop. Next meeting, which we're moving to the twentieth and hopefully everyone or most people can make that um. Just in the, um, we wanna make, celebrate the Juneteenth holiday and uh, so we're. Set up our board event that night and move it to the twentieth. Coincided, uh, in terms of prep. You know, anything that you can do to come prepared, thinking of the goals and outcome metrics. And when you think about outcome metrics can be anything from a. You know, I know, you know, we will do three of these things or something like that. It could be just one. Example, even though you're looking for something broad, it could be just an example that. Would be a, an indicator that you, you've done that. Uh, and then in terms of the workshop, Annalise has graciously volunteered to uh, facilitate the workshop for us. And, and go through um. And I don't know, Annalise, if you have anything that you want us to prepare.
I'm, I'm very happy to do it. Um. I think I probably will have some homework, but I wanted to connect with you, Eric, before I put that out to the group. So we'll. We will connect and talk about intimate outcomes of that meeting and then um, think a little bit about a protocol to follow, keep us structured and organized. And uh, on point and uh, and then I will reach back out with uh, whatever. Homework you might have beforehand. I suspect it'll be a lot, but um, if we, if we want you to prepare somewhere, we'll let you know.
And, and thanks, Annalise. And that's gonna be kind of our brainstorming, maybe get some things together, but then we do uh. Our goal is, our goal for our goals is by September, when we start school that we. Have our goal or by early September, we have our goals for the year rather than, I don't know, it was November.
And this starts at six.
Well, our regular meeting would start at six. We'd roll probably under an hour, uh, and then seven o'clock. Is the, is the intended plan.
Any questions on that? Okay, the next topic we had briefly discussed last week, um. About kind of Board of Ed agenda planning. So kind of looking forward and getting things on an agenda. And Carissa was nice enough to put together a spreadsheet. That starts to lay it out of what we're looking to do. Again, this is all preliminary. And so I'm gonna Jeff today of like, what do we, how do we kind of move this forward? Thought that we could kind of push this to triple A. Um. Just to give it to a committee to say, okay, how, you know. Kind of flush this out a little bit more, put a little more meat, see, do some things. And so that we can lay out um, a little bit more of the things that we want. Kind of to consistently hear on a regular basis. And then, and then execute to that. Obviously, these are gonna be supplemented by. Other topics that we have to cover, but just to have something of the more uh, recurring nature. So um, I don't know if anyone had a chance to look at the um, other document that, that Carissa had put together like spreadsheet. That breaks it out by. Uh, month, just looking at how it could look. This is not, this is just how it could look. Um. Just laying out some of the things that we talked about. Any? Initial thoughts or?
Well.
Like you said, to trying to get into the principals, more information about the schools, like Eric mentioned earlier about the middle school and the fifth grade. You know, yeah, that, that's easy to hear more of, of that, but what's happening in the schools, um, sort of thing. So. It's part of the premise too.
I like the, the structure. Um, so. You know, we can kind of see ahead of time to know what's on the agenda. And I wonder if there's an opportunity. To kind of in addition to. Um, you know, kind of getting what they're bringing back to us. Um. Ahead of that meeting. Is there any sort of, you know, earning issues or hot topics that we'd really like them to include? In that state.
Yep, absolutely. Yep, definitely.
You're talking to administrators, the principals?
Yeah, without structuring what they deliver.
Right, right, right.
You know, too, too much, but just. An opportunity for us to know that, okay, at our next meeting, at our next meeting, we'll have, you know, which administrator. And just, you know, if there's something that this members of the A W O would. Like to, you know, ask for some, you know, comment or update on in addition to the. Um. You know, when they, when they're already going to be preparing without burdening them, um, but. Just kind of an opportunity to connect that.
Yeah, cause it's some, yeah, definitely what you, more of what you wanna hear, certain thing, um.
Anyway, when they present itself, it's just. An opportunity to build that in ahead of time.
Great. Any? Other comment on this? And then um, the last discussion action item, personnel discussion action is the proposed. Uh, employment contract for. Superintendent Newton effective. July first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And um. Just for everyone. Knowledge what we are proposing is um. To add, I guess to start, to add another year, a contract year. Jeff's contract, so it will remain a three-year agreement. And a salary, a merit salary increase, which is consistent with the administrator's contract of two and a quarter. Percent increase. A market adjustment of forty-five hundred dollars as we look at superintendents across districts in our. Dirk and in our, in the southeastern Connecticut area. We want Jeff to continue to be kind of in the middle of tho, that range and that would um, those. Those continue to go up and, and we wanna be, make sure he's in the middle of that range. In addition, we would give him an adjustment for the TRB. Where currently we cover fifty percent of his payment and we wanna move that to seventy-five percent coverage. Um, for Jeff, where we would pay his portion of the TRB. And then we would increase his uh, tax sheltered annuity by two thousand dollars. And. Think that was the other thing.
I would like to make a motion to approve the proposed employment contract for Superintendent Newton effective July one, twenty twenty-three to June thirty, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
Uh, further discussion. Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes. Thank you, Jeff. Um, we, we really appreciate all that you do for the district. I. We collectively as a board, I don't, um. You know, we enjoy the partnership. We enjoy all you do to drive the district and lead the district. It's a very challenging job. You. Encounter a different challenge every day, um, and, and you handle it with grace and patience and um. As a leader and um. Appreciate all you do. Any, is anybody else?
Know what you put in and.
It's not every day, it's every month.
Yeah, yeah. You know, the, the team, the, the admin, the, you know, Annalise and Mariana, um, our teachers. You know, and we, I said earlier, we still got work to do. We've got morale issues that are growing. So we, we have. We have a lot of work to do going into next year that we gotta keep pushing, um, and make some changes. We're gonna collectively sit at the table and we gotta figure it out. We gotta start thinking outside the box, you know, to get people some, some change elements. And it's, we're talking this morning. Um, climate survey information is being collected, so we'll be going over that. Um, and uh, we've got some work to do, so.
Well, you're doing it. So thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, um, so that closes our discussion action items. No, no, you can take. You were collecting them.
Yes.
Um, that closes discussion action items. Move on to administrative reports and uh, Jeff.
Yeah, Eric mentioned earlier about Juneteenth, hence the. Um, real important reason to, to move that, that meeting on the nineteenth to the twentieth. So um. Heard back from uh, quite a few of you. So hopefully we can get um, everybody here. Uh, on the twentieth of June, uh, rather than the nineteenth. Um. The um, CHC, uh, Health Center, I reached back out to them. Uh, post our, our last meeting and uh, they are drafting up an agreement, which they'll share. Um, we're on target for, uh, as long as you know, the board sees that obviously and makes a motion approves that. Um, bringing in a uh, you know, student health center at the high school here. Um, we'll be able to bring it forward next, um, start of next year in the early fall. There's about a three-month window where they have to accept us. Too, once we sign the agreement. So hopefully I had that agreement pretty quick and we'll get to that.
Are we gonna give it to legal?
We would, exactly. It's exactly what, you know, um, Jean, who I'm working with. Had mentioned, um, that we'll take that document and we know her as well. We've been on the same calls with her. We'll share that with legal. We can play with it as, as we see fit and we'll bring that forward. So that's in the works. Um, today I was down in Town Hall with uh, Chris Fines. And yeah, this, this isn't, we, we had some conversations with Kevin Siri and Joe Vergar. About the old the OC building. Um, the, um. The uh. It's the uh. Architectural, not architectural, the um. Town, um. No, the group that has the historical society. Sorry, I couldn't think of the word historical. The historical society was going to take that over. It's, it's been vacant for a year now, um.
I heard that the historical society was taking.
They were going to, but we're hearing that they might not. So um. We had talked with, with Kevin and Joe about the idea of, you know, for, we've had maintenance equipment and there's just. The baseball, you know, the baseball field, you get tractors out along the side of the fence. It just, it doesn't look good. We can store some equipment, you know, maybe in the facility. Uh, you know, the, our two maintenance individuals are working out of the baseball, you know, underneath the press box. Uh, with space heaters and, you know, we don't get them potentially into a, a more suitable space where. Things could be worked on as heat, you know, that sort of thing. So it's an idea. We walked over and looked at it after the meeting. It's a mess in there right now.
I think they probably packed up and.
They just packed up and left and it's like, it looks like a train wreck in there. But. We'll see where it goes. I just wanted to put it out that the conversations are, are being, you know, had and obviously a lot more would come to you all to say. Is this feasible? Is this something we would wanna entertain and we would go from there? But I just didn't wanna get now that conversations were being had. Um, without you knowing, so.
Here and not at the town garage and.
Uh, yeah, I mean, to, again, just to get the equipment too away from the baseball. I was looking at that baseball game going on and. We had tractors and trucks. It's got a lot of parking behind it. We could park all of our trucks back there. Um, keep some, uh, out of, you know, away from public.
I was at the baseball game and I was like. This big giant yellow bar thing sitting here.
That's right. That's right. Save on the life of the equipment. So, um, again, it would need some work, but it used to be an old firehouse. So it has the two.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, they're not doors right now, but they would have to be kind of demoed. But again, we'll, we'll see where it goes. So it could be. Could use the space, um, because I don't think anybody else wants it at this point.
Recycle space.
Recycle space, exactly. So I'll keep you posted. Promise great. Saturday night. Brain value. My daughter was there. I was allowed to stay for a short period of time.
She's been complaining about the blisters on her feet and the lack of being able to walk correctly because her calves hurt.
I shared and there was three hundred and forty kids there. So it was the largest. I shared, and there was three hundred and forty kids there, so it was the largest room that we had, but that facility is, it's huge space. You know, yeah, you know the room, it's a huge space, it's great, so worked out well, yeah, so. So. That's it.
And Elise.
Yeah, so just um, you know, very uh feverishly wrapping up the end of the school year and projecting out into next year. It's really sort of like, it's crazy, I just kind of wrap it up and then you're thinking already um September, but. Uh as Jeff had mentioned, we've gotten the um school climate surveys out to all of our stakeholders, so we are collecting that data right now. The survey is closed on June ninth, at which point we will turnkey, turnkey that information over to our building administrators. So that when we come together for retreat, they have the information they need to make informed decisions, so. We're reading the feedback as it's coming in, and as Jeff mentioned, you know, there's obviously areas that we see trending that um. We're talking about and brainstorming already, but I'm looking forward to having a broader conversation with the administrative team and. Also, some of our um union leadership around how do we make some adjustments um in response to some of the feedback that folks have. Um, I have been meeting individually with all of our um curriculum fellows, and so um. I have a few more left before we close out next week, but essentially these meetings are really about us coming together. And talking about the work, the curriculum action plans that they set out to do at the beginning of the school year with their departments. Um and where they are, and that also helps us to plan uh work going into the summer, so I've got about. Probably about fifteen teams right now formulated for some curriculum summer work coming together to write, depending on where they are in the curriculum revision cycle. So I've been working um closely with those leaders to make those plans and also talk about um, you know, future plans for next year. Um we are looking to uh with our, with our coaches, looking to plan um professional development next year under that high impact teaching umbrella. So really looking at it, at those practices now through the lens of planning. Um so we're not really making any adjustments to our goal in that area, it's just a matter of, we talked a lot about.
Which is, you mean teacher coaches, not sports.
Correct, yeah, yeah, um so we're gonna be looping in um our fellows a little bit more on that work, so we can broaden the amount of. Our, or the, the capacity of the people bringing that professional development forward next year. Um nothing new, just a further, deeper exploration of the concepts around. Um high impact teaching, you know, research-based instructional practices that we know work um. And providing time for teachers to think about those practices in their classroom and plan for them. Um and collaborate with their, with their peers around them, um so done a little bit of planning around that. Um and our literacy group is coming together one last time next Monday. Uh to determine um our plan for the fall, uh whether or not we're gonna move forward with a. A second pilot um or something else, so I will keep the group informed as we. As we continue to make decisions. So, as you know, EL, we piloted EL, and the committee really determined that they wanted to try on another shoe. Right, I think I used the shoe analogy with you guys. Um and so we're looking at Amplify and um EL as two other options. And uh and we'll be coming back together as a committee on Monday to make a final decision.
What's going on statewide as far as? Those decisions and, and those curriculum.
Hands right now, from what I understand, over three hundred districts apply for a waiver. And so I believe some of the ESR funds are going to hire an external consultant to read through those waivers. We did not apply for a waiver, we applied for an extension. Which essentially said, we need more time to look at the programs that the state put forth before we make a decision. Um, so uh the state has followed up with some grant funding, so Eastline's, uh right now, our first round of funding is around forty-one thousand dollars. Um to support um the purchase of resources and professional development, so uh we're working with the team on identifying, prioritizing those funds. I really want it to be supplemental to what we would plan for teachers, not supplant, um they really think that's the intention of the grant funding. So, there's not much has changed, the, also the state hasn't put forth any additional programs at this point for us to. Um consider. Um and you know, it's just, we, we realize at this point that uh there is no glass slipper. And so uh those are the conversations we're having, and uh. You know, we will continue to ground ourselves in what's in the best interest for our students here in Eastline Public Schools, I promise you that, so. Um you know, we will, if, if we decide that a program is not for us, then we'll go back to the drawing plan and um and figure out what is for us. So, what we did do, uh during our second round of vetting. What we identified is that um when we, what we learned a lot from piloting my view. So we came back around the table after we piloted my view and said, okay. Clearly, we're not gonna find the glass slipper, so what is it that we really need to have in a program to supplement? What we don't have in our current programming, so that's sort of the lens we're using right now, which has been very helpful. In putting a critical eye on exactly what we're looking for in these programs. So we're certainly back around the table on Monday to look at that. Um you know, the foundational skills, we, we are utilizing foundations, so we don't necessarily, we're not making that a priority right now, because we have. A program that we have been implementing for three, three years, teachers are comfortable with it, we're not gonna. But there are some other uh components that we do need some um, you know, some workaround, uh comprehension being one of them. So um you know, that, that's an area that we are really utilizing as a focus area when we're looking at the. Um the different units of the programs.
And we'll know more in the next couple of days with legislators, with the session ending.
Yeah.
Um you know, June seventh, uh two days, Wednesday. Um around, you know, the waivers and, and we'll read, you know, all process, so we'll see what comes, comes about. Uh you know, through what. Through what uh they approved.
Can I just ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
But the waiver and the extension is so. Is an extension saying that you're, you've looked, you're continuing to look at a program that you want to continually got? And I'm, might be looking at this wrong, but in a waiver is a district saying, we've looked at everything you've offered and.
And um and it um, so the extension is that we need more time to look at the programs that you looked for before we make a decision on adopting one.
Okay, so you're still looking, so if you're still, in, in either um, either scenario, the expectations you're looking at, all of them.
No, the waiver says, we're not looking at any of that. Um we actually have programming established, developed in district. That we feel is though um supports all of the components behind science of reading in the legislation. And um.
They approved that.
And approved that by.
It's like a three hundred.
Okay.
It's like three hundred pages that they have to compile, put together, and prove that they are achieving the legislative decision that was made.
And three hundred something.
And, and um you know, although we have um. We have loosely written units of study in Eastline for reading. We did, we do not have what the waiver was requiring in the way of. But the question on the table right now is, well, we've looked at those programs and maybe we don't actually, none of them really meet our needs. Um can we now apply for a waiver, or what, what are our options now? That's the question, what are our options when we come to a space where the programs state of Connecticut that you put forth don't actually align to our values? And what we need here in Eastline, now what? And so um I'm not saying that that's where we are, but that is one of the questions that could be at the table.
Yeah, so as the State Department consultant, who is going to be through these three hundred waiver applications. And is going to decide.
Which districts are. Implementing curriculum who don't need to move towards an adopted program.
Okay, we're hearing that waivers are most likely be granted, Kevin, that I just heard that recently. Well, in the backlash too, so I think to your, your. Yeah, if, if we don't like what we talk and collaborate about next year, we might want to find our own program at the state, you know.
Or do we want to further develop our reading units of study that we have, you know, there are options that we can continue to um, to.
All I know is every college been on the reading program has just been. Say that again? Every call that I've been on about this reading program with the State Department, with Cade. No one knows what's going on, the State Department's confused, the teachers are confused, the superintendents are confused. Everybody's confused because nobody knows what the other one is doing.
Right, yeah.
Because I think this was just pushed through and rushed, there was no thought.
It was a legislative initiative, right?
Part of the issue.
Yes. And there was no thought behind it, they just pushed it.
They didn't know what they were doing.
No.
Right.
The state narrowed it down, forced, forced history's hands.
They didn't talk to teachers, superintendents, anybody before, they just said, yeah, sure, that sounds good.
Just one real quick question, I think a really important part of it is the collaboration between the. Coaches and then the, the captain with whom they provide that coaching.
Right.
How is that going?
You mean it just in terms of a model, the coaching model?
Proponent of that coaching, but it's hard to be, it's hard to be a proponent in your own land.
Yeah, um I would say it's going really well, um and on the June twentieth meeting, we're gonna talk a little bit about. It's gonna be really through the lens of um our, our progress monitoring and our benchmark assessment, but we're gonna talk about how we use that data to support. Focus areas in the classroom around coaching, so you'll hear a little bit more about that, we have Sumire joining us um from the elementary school. Kristen Amaral from the middle school and Kim Reed from the high school, all coaches who are gonna kind of explain. Sort of the nitty gritty around that benchmark data and how they use it to drive instruction in the classroom. So I think you'll, you'll learn more than.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is also a topic, let's make sure we get it in the agenda, just all reading and what's going on, maybe. One would be a good time to. Provide a bigger update where we can also. A lot of interest.
Okay.
And then uh, yeah.
They'll think about it, but let's, let's, um, let's have a.
But thank you for all your hard work.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we'll most likely move forward with a second pilot, just like, just because I think we've gone to come this far with a, with a process that. You know, to try only one shoe on, come on, we've gone two shot day, you've got to try more than one. And you only have one. You know, I, and I, just to experience the, you know, um what it's like to have a primary resource, um that's different from the one we piloted. And so um. So I think most likely we will go in that direction, but depending on the, the results of that pilot will. Help us determine our next.
You want to make an important decision.
Yeah, but I, I mean. A huge shout out to um all of the elementary school teachers who have been a part of that pilot work, whether they piloted. Or have been a part of the integrated curriculum committee or both, it has been a significant amount of time for them, um you know, and they've. They've just sort of um embraced it and been open and honest, it's just been really um. Probably one of the best professional experiences I've had in my career so far in this work. Um just because of the richness of the conversation and the passion of the people that are working, so. It's been really great, it's been really challenging, but it's been really great.
Thanks, Annalise.
Yeah.
Mariana.
Um just two things, we are, I know I say this every once in a while, but I think we have a light at the other end of the tunnel with Munis. So we have a.
This is a really long tunnel.
It is a really long tunnel, um so we have a project manager, we had our kickoff meeting. We started um our chart of accounts training today, so I'm hoping that um. In light of the, the, the someone I have, which I had expressed last, the last nine is, you know, we, the finance director at the town. Is leaving at the end of August, so it is a joint, yeah, it's a joint project, so uh. There is an assistant finance director, I believe they are starting the search in July. Um Kevin Siri Richell.
So you passed again to be part of that.
Again, so.
Good one last time, may find another.
To rail, yeah, to rail the uh, the, the project, so. Yeah, um, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Mariana. Okay, but um. That closes the administration reports, moving on to committee reports. Triple A was last time, FFO was today.
What do you want to talk about?
There's just, uh so we had the three topics and just.
Draw a blank, I'm sorry, I'm.
That's okay, so we covered um the. We, that's okay, we had the Salem facility combination discussion.
It's exciting, we're going to think, we're thinking about Salem has got to take over their facilities, facility management. We talked about the contract, what we can do for them, it's an opportunity, uh Dr. Lunch will be in charge of it. We decided on a contract price approximately, so we're gonna be drying that up, we're also part of that plan is. Higher up our time uh project manager who will. Work with Salem, but will also be available to any issues that we have. And it may in a way free Dr. London to do whatever he needs to do, that's. That would be the appropriate thing that he needs, what I'm saying is, it'll give him an opportunity. To bring him up, and he can do more than what he wants to do in his job, that he should be spending more time. So it's a win-win for both of the, both of the, both of the schools, both of our school systems. Because we assume that the contractor that they had in place before they lost him. Will be able to provide those services unless, unless we're just. So are we talking about what we think it's going to be, what we think?
Just, I think, just to bring both of them.
Yeah, yeah, and we're gonna, we're gonna bring more back to the table, yeah, on, on that scoreboard.
Scoreboard, uh looking at Ms. Mariana, has contacts in the Stonington School System, right in the town of Stonington. I never really got a clear name of the name of the marketing company, Power, it, it used to be Side Effects, um but instead he said they changed it. Um after COVID, because when you typed in side effects. Or something like that, so it's now Power Add, that's what it's called. Marian is the expert on this, she, she was the one that had the conversation with them, but we talked about how we've set, we wanted to do something in marketing. For a long time, and this is really opportunity, so we in essence, and correct me if I'm wrong, we contract with them. For example, we talked, spent a lot of time talking about scoreboards, so they replace our scoreboard with a, let's say we use. JCPenney, that's the first thing that came to my head, and so we contract with this company. Who in turn markets to JCPenney, they sign a contract, we make so much money back. They make so much money, but we're also with the money that we're making, let's say the first bunch, ten years, we're paying back the company for the purchase of the scoreboard. But at least what it does, it puts us in the marketing realm that we have tried so long to get there. They do all the work for us, because we did go like, well, why don't we have someone here do it? Well, if you've ever done sales or done a fundraiser. And we're looking for Chachki's and Price, it's a, it's a lot of work, it's a lot of work, so. We're thinking about signing a contract with our group, I think we have some more questions, but we're gonna start big with scoreboards, I think we came up with. We're gonna start with a football uh scoreboard, the reason we're going to start with that is. We utilize that area, that's one of the fields that we utilize probably throughout the whole year, we run football and many other sports out there. Or people walk, or they do tracks, so there's. It would just be a good visual ad, ad for us, so I think we'll be able to drive a company out. A company that will come in and sign, put their name on our scoreboard, and the third topic.
Uh with early retirement.
Early retirement, this is for the secretaries and also for, oh my God, I'm trying. Pardon? Custodians, and this is something we did back, correct me if I'm wrong, Mariana, in two thousand twenty. Uh I think it was with the teachers, was it not?
No, um we did it, and we did it in twenty eighteen, secretaries and custodians, and then. Um we had a few there, and then in twenty twenty, we did it, but there were no one.
Okay. So this is an opportunity that we offer them a early retirement. In essence, it gives us an opportunity to look about when we retire, you're gonna retire. uh, someone who's in a starter, in a starter role, so in essence, we can save some money from that. So we discussed really the outline, how much we can make or savings, I guess I should say. And what we come to the conclusion, if no one, if no one signs up, no one signs up, we have not lost anything. If for some reason people do sign up, but it doesn't seem like it's something wise for us to do as a board financially, then we have the ability to walk away from it. So at this point, what we're going to do is put it out as an offering. I guess there's been some interest in my breath, a couple of people have been talking, so it's another opportunity to reap savings. We're going to take an opportu, uh, what, opportunity, we're gonna take a chance and do it.
So that would be for this year for twenty.
I'm gonna let Mary answer that one.
Yeah, for, for next, next year, we would offer in September and then January, we get the two, the two timeframes. And we have a larger population of individuals that are of age, of where this might, you know, uh, be something that's enticing to them. Where obviously then we're hiring in at lower steps and saving money, uh, and there's savings over time.
It's a very stressful job and those people that do that work are just right on the line for the work that they do and what they provide to our just for, so. Absolutely, it's something for them, I'm concerned. Thanks, Jill.
Thanks, Jill. Good job. Couldn't remember the three topics, but certainly talk on it. Good question. I run out so I can deal with an issue, uh, has to do with the DJ. I'm so.
Of course.
Um, my daughter's a mess.
We didn't have policy, right? Was it checked, so, uh, anything?
Nothing that I didn't cover at the last meeting.
Perfect, and, um, paid anything with Lauren?
Um, there's a meeting coming up on Thursday, um, same, you know, budget and, um, food service. You know, just, you know, similar to what we were going through was what they're doing, so.
Okay, yeah.
Great, thanks, Dave. And then, um, board comments and future agenda items.
I have a comment. Um, so my daughter is in the Latin American Studies class and they did a big presentation to the state board event last week, um, which she was all excited about and she said it went really well. She saw the two of you there, she was texting me, glad to see who's here. But her feedback from the class, I thought I would share with you, it's the best, most informative history class she's taken the entire time she's been in Eastline.
Lovely.
She has learned the most history in any class that she's ever been in that class this year.
That's great.
She loves the class, she loves her teacher, but she was excited as she got to present and be part of the board to the state board event presentation. She said all her classmates are good and they were all excited. Yeah, she was, it was very nice to see you guys out there.
It was nice for me, yeah, it was great, it was part of that.
I think I took a picture. I'll put it in the update.
Yeah, she, she was all talk, she was, she's been, she had been planning for it, mom, don't forget, you're gonna get absences because I'm gonna be missing my classes. I've already talked to my teachers.
But she, yeah, it was, I mean, it was Eastline's first time going through that, um, that process, but I guess there had been districts, they sat in a presentation from a district that had been doing it for, you know, couple of years now and, and so, um, I thought they did a great job and spoke from the heart.
It was a great class. I learned a lot and she brought a lot of it home and we had a lot of family discussion.
Yeah.
Um, I mean.
She's a junior now?
She's a junior.
What is her name?
Ainsley. But history is her favorite subject. She is a history, uh, who, who, I mean, she thrives on history, so she was excited to take this class. But she said it's the best class she's had at Eastline since she's been here, so appreciate you, sorry.
That's great. Other comments? Okay.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
All of the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, and then we are adjourned. Oh, don't really move.
Yes.
For each of us to take home.
Oh, sweet.